Return the signed one, well, it'll be returned to us once every town, city, county, as it has jumped on with the MOU, so you'll have actually a copy.
So we just need to sign the one today?
No, I need to get a copy.
We should, yep.
Sign my name.
So, so yeah, I, I appreciate that.
Just keep it.
Okay.
Bill, are you able to attend these meetings?
Well, we're gonna get to that here on the next part of this. I am certainly interested, so if it's, if it's possible, I would like to come to it. Problem I've had before is the time didn't meet with my doctor's appointments, but if, if Julia's willing to, and they're willing to appoint, why, I would like to work with you to sometimes be there, maybe we both go over.
Interbeing?
I only have one vote, but...
Yeah, it would not, it would not supersede the authority of the commissioners, so it would just be an appointment that would be, keep your vote on your behalf if you weren't there. So, yeah, absolutely, it would not, would not change procedure.
So is that like a, what's the word, I want to know, proxy, where he steps in?
I would say, I would say that's a fair, that's a fair, and I don't know if it says that exactly for the commissioners. Devolpr?
How about alternate?
Yeah, let me get you the exact language, but, yeah, it, it's not supersede the, the commissioners' vote, it's just more, because there might be things that, and there will be projects this time around that, that we're going to, last time we were like, oh, we're getting money, awesome, what's all, but that will be challenging decisions made, and there will be votes to be had, and we just gotta make sure that we, we have at least a third person in the room to, to vote on Carroll County's behalf, because typically New County has between, just typically New County in general, Ivy Tech, Purdue, county commissioner, City Lafayette, West Lafayette, so they could coalesce that, that certainly we're gonna need support for, so.
Well, I think you couldn't have picked a better person to be the replacement if it needed to be.
So, I would entertain a motion if you wanted to appoint Julia.
Alter, that's the word you wanna use there?
Yeah, I was looking, I was looking.
What would be the proper verbiage for that?
Ted, we had in the language, we negotiated an appointment on behalf of the commissioners, and I'm trying to find where.
In the MOU?
Correct.
So if Bill can't attend, the person we appoint could be there to be our voice.
Are you looking at page two, three A, or?
Yeah, the, it's, it's a, an appointment or a representation appointment on behalf of the county.
The A, up there at the top.
Yeah, yeah, so any, a member of the county commissioners of each party, or a member of the county council of such county designated by, oh, they have county counting.
Or a member of the council designated by the county commissioners.
Yeah, so it'd just be, you'd be a mem, you would be voting member representation for this.
Page, page two, three A.
Yeah.
So it don't have to be a council member, it can be?
It does not have to be, that's the way I'm reading it, that's the way we negotiated.
It gives the commissioners the choice to have one of their members or a member of the council.
It doesn't give a third party? Is that how you're?
It doesn't, it doesn't, uh, let's see, let me see.
That's not how we negotiate, that's not what we verbally negotiated with, so.
Okay, okay, well, can you get them to put, um, they would need to change three A, the member of the county commissioners, they've, they've done the same with the city, too.
Okay.
It's the mayor, or a member of the city council designated by the mayor, so they're consistent, the way they got it.
That's what they wanted, and they got it in the language, so.
Okay, so you wanna, you wanna lobby for a change in that?
We'll work through their attorneys and get that changed, yep, that's my apologies.
Our contracts aren't gonna be good then, right now, that we signed the MOU?
I, I think we gotta, we've gotta be at the table regardless, if we're, if they don't wanna move this at all, so I would recommend approving it, and then subject, I mean, work on, negotiate, and if we do get it changed, then we can bring back an MOU with a, with a third-party appointment.
You wanna put that, amend that motion?
Yeah, all the original, the original motion. I, I, matter of fact, I don't think we, we should, I think we just keep it, and if I bring back a changed MOU, then we just, we approve the new MOU with the new language.
We just haven't appointed yet at this point.
Correct, and that's my, that's a slight oversight on my part, because I know we had verbally discussed it, but as we all know, sometimes when attorneys start typing, they, they'll have, they'll have the language, so that's, that's just not how we interpreted it when, when we got done, so here we are.
All right. Is that what attorneys do?
All right. Whoa, whoa, they can stay up, yes.
No, I, I think that's what the original language had, and so that's probably what version we got instead of the updated.
I was looking to see deeper in the document, it, it had the ability of the designated member to be, to have, I mean, they could, they could do that in their bylaws, had they, see they're authorized to, to do, adopt their own bylaws under five, paragraph five, page two. I mean, the bylaws could provide for proxy, like, we have our emergency management and our, uh, emergency medical, they have elected officials, we're, we've given them the right to delegate a designated, basically a proxy, to attend and have voting power, so they could do that in the bylaws, if they will do that.
Yeah, I, I think-
That's the only way that'll get done, or, the better way is if, if A, and probably B, if the mayor wants, to be able to be two-point-a, non-elected official as their representative, that would need to be changed, paragraph three.
Okay, yeah, all, I think we should stick with the MOU, and then, and then if they haven't budged off that, or something, maybe there was a conversation from the time we negotiated it to the time it was released and sent over, so, because the version I read initially before it was sent over had, had red writing and-
I would think they would want to be able to have somebody in the chair, you know?
And I think that was the intent, and somehow the language didn't get changed.
The main thing we wanna make sure of is that if we have somebody there, they have voting rights.
Yes, sir.
Exactly.
So, I, I'm okay with leaving it with the commissioners as per the MOU, and then if we get a change or an amendment to the MOU, then we can work on the appointment.
Very good.
Okay.
Thanks, Jake.
Yeah, I did, I have one more quick thing, if you don't mind, so with the, with Ready two-point-O, we're gonna have probably some significant ask from the Ready region. One of them is we are going to pursue likely a five or six million dollar ask from the state of Indiana for the shell building project. The only money that can be given through the state for the Ready projects are projects that are one-to-one public matched, and so our argument has been, like, rural communities, small communities don't have the capital overlay just to spend dollars down, they either have the debt, which we try to avoid, or to try to coalesce with projects that are already in the pipeline to get, to get done, so they're already spending money on projects, and so what we're gonna do is we're gonna ask for this project, process the matching funds for the shell building, so as we go through the regulatory process with the shell building and getting approvals through the council, and all the regulatory pieces to that, any money that's overlaid or outlaid for that building, if it's approved, would be matched one-to-one, we're asking the state to match that dollar for dollar. So essentially, the county's paying for a 50,000 square foot shell building that will in return be able to be finished by the funds from the state of Indiana, and we'll have a fully finished spec building at half the cost, essentially, is what we're trying to get done. So that'll be part of it, also, we're looking at about four million dollars for housing, two and a half million for the town of Flora and their wastewater expansion project, so that'll be on the table and negotiated and voted, likely a million dollars for the city of Delphi, they have a single-family housing project that, that, that will be possible next year, and so they'll be working on a match for that as well, and then 175,000 for a childcare center in Flora will be an ask as well, so the town of Flora has committed their land that's just west of town where the old brethren home was, they've committed that land to the childcare center, and so what we're gonna do is use the in-kind value of that property as one-to-one match for Ready as well, so we're trying to get every, so if there's another projects, like, we, we have a project, I mean, every, every time that we have a possibility to spend public dollars from the county or even the municipal level over the next year, we need to probably look at how this fits in the state's funding and try to get matching dollars, so we can either reduce the cost of the project over, over the term of it, or get a better product because the state's paying for, for half of it, so.
At some point, and I'm just speaking off the top of my head here, we're going to be needing to look for another ambulance garage on the county level, we need, we need to do the one south of town out here. It's been brought to my attention that perhaps Rossville is not going to continue their ambulance service, and so, right now, they take care of Clay Township. Do you know anything about that?
I, yeah, I have heard that, yes, I haven't heard of it.
But I, I think they're just the first responder, right, we usually come anyway?
Yeah, we, we usually end up, it's few and far between when they, when they, you know, show up, so, I mean, they're volunteer services, hard to be volunteer, so we've been covering the area now.
When, when the, when I heard that, my thinking was, maybe we better be looking closer at putting that new ambulance garage south of town so that we can cover that area, maybe better, but this'll be a group discussion about it, I just wanna throw it out on the table here and there.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a point taken, for any, any dollars we're using, we gotta find ways to leverage it with the state tax, tax dollars we already pay, so, yeah, this is just be, Ready's just one way for us to do that, and it could go, I mean, we can debate any project and figure out how it fits.
I mean, we already got the plans for the building, wanna keep them all the same, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Beth, we're ready for your part here.
Okay, and we have a job description for courthouse security, part-time, the last one that you approved was a full-time, they did not approve full-time in their budget, so I mean, part-time.
Do we have one part-time or two-part-time?
There's supposed to be two-part-time, if everything gets okay.
Well, my question, one or two gentlemen, is do you wanna have time to look this over and?
It is just like the last one that you did, except it says part-time.
Except for the part-time.
It just says part-time.
I was gonna say, this comes from Earl and Angel, I believe.
Yes.
So why wouldn't they approve of full-time when we're trying to make our courthouse secure?
You'll have to ask them, 'cause I do know that.
I mean, part-time's only 26 hours, so they only go to work during trials? Is that what, is that what part-time would mean, Mike? You'd all talk your head into it?
Each part-time is only 25 hours, you know?
Okay, so we can get the whole week covered, then?
Pretty careful we covered, but if somebody's off, what else is gonna happen?
I don't know how it's gonna work.
Yeah.
That's up to the sheriff.
Have any sheriffs over here? I'll make a motion to approve the-
We got a motion in a second to approve this position description for a county house, geez, bro, courthouse security officer, all in favor, please say aye. All right, um, let me ask you, do you think there's, are there people out there that would wanna take this job for half, half-time?
For part-time?
Yeah.
I don't know.
You'd have to be certified, don't you?
They have to, yes, there's gotta be certifications.
I was gonna say, 'cause like, so like, if I would no longer sit up here and I wanted to be a part-time, leaving the jail facility, I would vote for that.
Even the jailers would have to, are not certified to do this, right now, they'd have to go through at least pre-basic, and then whatever other requirements are set forth in that job description, and what other requirements the sheriff sets forth.
The only way to have to go to work is if you, you have 30 or 40 part-timers that is willing to come in to do this, that's off-duty officers.
Well, they can't be county officers, though.
Right.
Because that would throw them into, our, they can't be our county officers.
Right, 'cause it puts them in overtime and all that, but the only way you're gonna get any time is part-timer, somebody who just retired and wants to stay involved.
As long as they maintain their certifications.
Right. So, I mean, it's almost a, kind of, to me, it's a dead deal already, because it's gonna be harder, you'll, you'll have officers, you know, maybe some of the Delphi officers might wanna come in, or Flora, or Rossville and the surrounding counties, but it depends on what the pay would be, I mean, most officers don't wanna do these stuff, rest their lives for 15 to 20 dollars an hour, or whatever part-time pays, to me, it needs to be a full-time position, and a part-time position, and where you have, you have someone here all the time and you have a part-time, that's the way I see, just my opinion.
I think they did everything he could do, though, representing us and representing the committee to sell the council on this idea, this is what they came up with, am I not right on that?
You'll have to have that discussion with the council, I, I wasn't in their meeting when they made the decision on to do the part-timers, I, I heard conversations, but I wasn't there, so I'm not gonna repeat what was said.
You can speak your voice on, at one of the meetings, you can come November 16th and voice your opinion.
16, okay.
I was at the meeting, and, and I think the issue here, well, I know what the issue is, is when the council, when the subject came up of your budget, the council was polled as to how all of them felt about courthouse security, what kind of priority it was, on a one to five, a scale of one to five, one being the most important, five being the least important, and there were six council members there at that budget session, three of them voted two, and three of them voted five, so therein lies your issue, if one of you would've been here to argue the importance of courthouse security, that might've altered their decision, but I think it's important that you, as, as commissioners, voice your concerns and your priority of courthouse security to the council, so that they can, that'll change their priority, but they just don't see it as a priority, and that's why the budget got cut, and that's why you have to-
Okay.
So that statement there that says if we give the money for courthouse security under the edit, they ain't gonna approve it, 'cause they don't think it's important?
That's not actually true.
Well, we'll wait and see.
Wait and see, I mean, that's kinda a different thought, man.
Yeah.
I'll make some phone calls with you.
And I've had a couple one-on-one conversations with them, and the ones that I've talked to, they've voiced concerns of the future jail and the operation cost of the future jail, you know, they're gonna have to have more jailers, and not knowing what those costs are gonna be, and bringing on limited tax base, the threat's aren't going away here, and larger jails as well, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, please, Mike.
Next thing-
Thanks for letting us know how that works.
Next thing in your file is your requisition, number 17, from D.W. Construction, that needs to be approved.
It's in your-
I think it's for 1 million something, 400,000.
1,134,758 dollars and 12 cents. It's listed there, what's that?
And, and your back, that it's listed in one, in the town.
Where it goes, those four.
Yeah.
We have copy of it.
Well, give me a motion, Joe, for that number seven.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, awesome paper.
I don't have all the information yet, I just have it totaled down, just wrote down.
Make a motion. Pay recognition number 17, for 1,134,758 and 12 cents.
I'll say.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to endorse and, I guess, pay disbursement of funds from project fund for requisition number 17 in the amount of 1 million, 134,758 dollars and 12 cents, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, we need to sign it here.
We need three of them, right?
I just need that one.
You need one?
I, I understand, I didn't even-
You got, you got all the paperwork.
Yeah, I need the one that Bill has, yeah.
Yeah, I'll have it, stick it there on there.
Next thing I would like to ask for, the date of December 18th, be approved for their courthouse employee Christmas luncheon from 12 to 1:00, and have courthouse closed from 12 to 1:00, like they do every year, there's no county funds going towards that.
That's our regular meeting anyway.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we close the courthouse from 12 to 1:00 for our employee during, for the court, Christmas luncheon. Yeah.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Then, we were discussing the special public discussion on the wind and solar, that was set for possibly December the 4th at 5:30 PM, the area plan would like to make sure that their, his people can be there, so that's kind of a tentative date, we also were looking how long the day that would be for a couple people.
Wait, wait, I got parts of that, start over on it for me.
The December 4th, you had set a public hearing, or a public discussion on the solar and the wind ordinances, area plan director Cameron Yates would like to make sure that all his people can, or some of his people could make it that night, that wasn't-
So is he saying we can't do it on that night, or?
No, he, he's just hasn't, he hasn't known that, so, till now, I guess, so, I'm just telling you.
I think he's got, oh, excuse me, he's got some scheduling conflict, I think, split, with his, some of his board members, maybe, and plus, we're gonna be here during the day, then we're gonna turn around, leave here, and go right back to another meeting.
That's true, so.
I'm just asking, before I advertise it in the paper.
Do we need to?
They can accept us, so they can.
Yeah, well, maybe, since we're gonna be here that day, too, move it to a different day, now, we still need it in the evening for when people can, can get off work, and attend, who's got questions and-
I could ask him to have everything in place by the 20th, I mean, if you give me that date and another date, he can decide.
Mike, is your building gonna be available?
Depends on the night, and I'm still, I'm working on getting quotes, I had Randy come in to, to take a look at an audio system.
Right.
And he's, he recommended that I reach out and get some quotes done, through two different companies, so I'm waiting for them to come out and give me the quotes on the audio systems.
All right, well, we don't wanna interfere with your scheduling, using the building down there.
As far as the evenings in December, right now, the only one I got is, there's a CPR training class going on the 11th.
Okay, so the 11th is out, as far as PA systems, you know, we have, we have one here somewhere, bang, right there, yeah.
And I've got a portable one that we could set up for a podium and that, but, and one of the mics works from the old system, there is a little bit of feedback, so the auditor wouldn't be able to record, though.
I, I could bring in one of these, much bigger than this one.
It's just discussion.
I would, wouldn't think I would have.
Yeah, I think for a meeting place, might as well just have something in place down there.
Oh, I want something in place all the time, I'm just trying to think in terms of getting it done by this meeting.
Right, if it's not done, I mean, I've got other means to where you can get sound.
Okay, well, as we get closer, talk to me about it, so I can, if possible, help you out with what we need, 'cause I wanna make sure everybody in that room can hear what's going on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's pretty big.
Well, yeah, it's a big space, basically.
The only issue will be parking, if there's a lot of people, I mean, a hot, you know, with the trailers and all that.
Yeah.
That would be the only issue, I would see, if you anticipate a large crowd, if you anticipate a large crowd, I don't know, maybe the little auditorium at the school or-
Maybe people don't care that much, I don't know.
I, I don't know, I, I don't know what you would intend.
I see signs popping up all over Rossville now of no wind farm, or no, no solar farm.
No solar farm?
I, I've seen a couple no solar farms popping up.
In Carroll County?
In Carroll.
In the southern part of the county, I thought I seen one, too.
Well, okay, we'll just have to work together, are they gonna give you a date there that we can do it?
He's checking on the four, so I don't, I just wanted to make sure before I put it in the paper, I think it's already been in.
Well, if we, we meet the 20th anyway, so the only person we won't have would be Lauren.
Yeah, well, is there any day there, Lauren, that's bad for you in that week, 4th through the 8th?
Well, as of now, yeah, I might be hit most of that week, Monday is the, maybe the only day I couldn't be here.
Monday's the only day you can be here.
Possibly.
Go about from the 11th through the 15th?
We'll talk about it.
We can't use 11, so do 12, 13, 14.
Okay.
Yeah, that week, 11, that's pretty good.
Okay, so it looks like that if we, according to Lauren, and correct, we went wrong here, we could do it the 4th, or we could do it the 12th through the 15th?
Right, I said we do it the 12th through the 15th, give them time to get their schedules set, and that way they know they got the time.
That work for you, Lauren?
I think so, 11 through the 15.
And you have nothing planned besides the 11th, right, Mike?
11 through the-
Down there, okay.
I don't have anything that, no, the rest of the week's open right now, Kristen, you got anything?
This is, this is 10.
The fourth has already been in the paper, so, I mean, if you wanna leave it the fourth, I don't have a problem with that, if the area plan people can-
And that starts about 5:30?
Yes.
Fourth is already in, so.
Correct.
I guess that leads towards the-
I haven't seen it in the paper.
I can't really, I actually can't.
I didn't see it in the paper when I looked.
It was in my story.
Was it?
It was in the story, yeah.
Well, still, yeah, the fourth would work, that's gonna make our shift.
Let's, let's just see if they can come, and we'll go from there, and I'll, I'll report to you on the 20th, how's that?
Sounds good.
Okay. I do have-
The 4th.
Um, Bobree will not be able to be here with figures for us, but he can be here on Thursday at 4:00 PM, can we, can we set him, just, just him?
Who is it?
Bobree for your county insurance, we are off on Friday because of Veterans Day, and that is when we need to have an answer, so, on the county liability insurance and the work that's on.
So you want us to meet, have a special meeting, or? So you want us to meet, have a special meeting on this Thursday?
This Thursday at four P M.
The ninth? Ours is the eighth, right?
Oh, I can't do, I can't do Thursday, anything, I can do Thursday morning.
I can take your guys' word on it, I shouldn't be back to work, well, I thought I'd be back for another day.
I can't do anything, I got empty on the schedule.
So when are you suggesting, Beth?
He suggested November ninth at four P M.
You can, if you can, if you two can do it.
I can't do four P M.
Right, I mean, if you can do it.
You can, or?
Not four P M, I can do morning, but I can't do four P M. Maybe you have to sleep in.
Is that forty-eight hours away? Thursday at noon, is that forty-eight hours for me? Well, the ninth is next week. Oh, no, it isn't, don't ask me. Yeah, I just leave the weekend, forty-eight hours ahead.
Is, is Bob's schedule pretty much open?
I don't know, but he gave me this, so, I mean, he might be waiting on.
I didn't bring my book in, Beth, I'm stupid, so I'll have to, uh.
I mean, I can do the four P M, but if they can, if Lauren will be here, she can do it.
If Lauren did do it, well, now, there's one day there, it's either the eighth or the ninth, because I have a test to take. Mocha scan. I'll have to call now, have to call you and tell you.
Okay. Just need forty-eight hours, so, um.
Is there, is there a deadline on this, that he has to turn it in, is that what you said?
Renewal date is the tenth, but he's had trouble getting people to bring figures in.
Renewal date is the tenth?
And we are off that day. I can see if he can do it nine, at the ninth, like at one o'clock? Can you do it then? Or what time did you say, I, I guess I didn't.
He's gonna be going in the afternoon and evening.
I got any apples needs, late after.
I will just have to check my booker, I ran out without it today, so. One of those two, Wednesday or Thursday, I have to test, so I gotta check it out. Look at this, wait now, right there. It's Thursday, I have a test.
Okay.
Which will take up about, well, it's around noon, so it kind of messes up the whole day, but it takes about three hours to do this test.
About eight-thirty, can I? I don't know, it shouldn't take long.
Pardon me?
It shouldn't take long.